Happy to support LD 783. MACCA envisions a Maine agriculture that can generate the vast majority of the state's food supply with locally, organically grown produce. Our membership is comprised of farmers, gardeners, and consumers who share a goal of ensuring that Maine families, regardless of income and location, have access to local organic food. Demand is growing each year, and the number of farmers in farms is increasing as well. But in order to achieve a goal of healthy food access for all Maine, for all, Maine needs to ensure that responsible policies are in place at local, county, state, federal, and increasingly international levels. There are far too many policies in place to undermine citizens' efforts to secure fresh local and ecologically produced nourishment. USDA estimates that 15.1% of Maine households or more than 200,000 individuals are food insecure. The numbers of Mainers who are food insecure has increased significantly in recent years. Maine ranks 17th in the nation and first in New England for food insecurity. MACCA supports collaboration within the agricultural community to identify and create a food system that is not only safe, but also allows farmers to meet the demand for local foods without excessive government regulation. Supporting local food production has been one of MACCA's priorities since MACCA was established in 1971. We would like to express our respect and appreciation for Representative Hickman's efforts to move this discussion forward through a constitutional amendment. And when thinking about this bill, it occurred to us that the U.S. Constitution should have such an amendment, but as with many other bold initiatives, it is fitting that MACCA leads this, that Maine leads this discussion, excuse me. The big challenges will be in implementation. Attached to this testimony is a document that may prove helpful in working through this in months and years to come. It's a position statement that our Board of Directors adopted about a year ago entitled, "Farmer Autonomy, Consumer Choice, and Science-Based Regulation." Thank you for your consideration of this important proposal. We look forward to working with you as Maine's agriculture becomes more accessible, more local, and more organic. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather, questions? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
Pass this bill out of committee onto the legislature chair and hopefully on to the electorate of the State meeting, and let's give everyone a chance to vote on it. I think the need is exhibited by impart, by a good example of this need is what was mentioned before about the legal position, the legal statements by the FDA about what our rights really are. I think that's quite telling, and I think it demonstrates a need. I want to echo so many other things that I've heard in favor of this bill, and I won't get into all of them. I sort of picked out one thing that I thought might be a little bit unique of my viewpoint that hasn't been said. I travel around New England quite a bit, not southern New England, not so much Connecticut, Rhode Island, but Massachusetts and Vermont and I'm sure Maine, unfortunately. And, you know, Maine is approximately the same size geographically as the rest of New England combined, and I think in some ways our image doesn't match our physical reality sometimes. And I'm often asked, oh, what's going on up there, or what about this, or what about that? And I was recently asked, for example, about the religious bill that, I'm not sure if it was Senator Burns or Representative Burns, I mean disrespect, but I don't know his title. I was asked about that, and I said, oh, no, it was withdrawn. And I said, you know, I think people, realistic people sensitive to income tax and tourism prevailed or something, you know, and we didn't have to go there. But people are watching us, people are watching us, and there's huge markets down there. And things like this bill, I think, represent a wonderful opportunity to represent to the rest of New England and the rest of the nation as well, but I'm really focusing on New England, that in Maine, we have agricultural policies of responsibility, consumer friendliness, that somehow we, you know, we're a little bit hip to what educated people in southern New England that want good products from an agricultural state such as ours. It's just a wonderful opportunity, and I think we need to work on that image, and this is just one little piece of it, but it's an important piece of it. In fact, if we, if it's defeated here, it would be a poor reflection on us. So I'm always in favor of supporting agriculture and developing that support in the rest of New England.
Yeah, thank you, Allen. And it is important that even if you don't have a long written testimony, you just want to get up and say, I support, or I oppose, or I'm neither for nor against, as you'll let us know how you see it. Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Good evening, me, Agricultural Committee of Maine. My name is Arianne Johnson, and I am from Waterville, Maine. I go to KDCC, Connect Valley Community College, and I study sustainable agriculture and research. And I am a person who buys organic food. I've been doing it since I was 20 years old. I take it very importantly, and also as far as knowing whatever is labeled on the foods that I buy, I believe that people, you know, if they put their U.S. dollars into what they buy, they should know, they should be able to, you know, know if their food is And I'm not saying that GMO foods are completely bad because there's no actual scientific proof yet, but people want to know, you know, what is, what is labeled, and so I do support the seven, the bill, sorry, for GMO labeling. You know, and some people will end up buying, you know, foods that are still labeled.
Well, we're not doing labeling, but this is Representative Hickman's bill.
Oh, okay. And food for everyone.
Correct.
Yes. So I also support that, too. That food should be, you know, available to everyone, people should be able to do the fishing that they need to do to support their families. So I guess I support that.
What are some of the names of the, you're taking the agricultural course, you said?
Yes.
Do you know the names of any other programs that are offered at school?
Oh, they also have culinary arts.
Well, I meant agriculture and nature.
Okay, and agriculture, crop production.
Crop production.
Sustainable agriculture, the basics, sustainable agriculture. Let's see, just machinery and, you know, what does it have?
Ag mechanics?
Yes, mechanics for on-farm, animal science, soil science.
Oh, this is new to me. I didn't realize that.
And we have been talking a lot about GMO foods, so, you know, and the importance of that people, pretty much everybody in my class almost supports the fact that they would like to see that GMO foods would be labeled, so.
Okay. Thanks, Ms. Johnson.
Right, thank you.
Next is James Ray.
Thank you, Senator Edgum, Representative Hickman, and me. I don't represent one group unless it's just old people. People who survive. My wife, my wife and I, and two dogs and a cat came to Maine 44 years ago. And I've been involved in education for 42 years, coaching, teaching, consulting. We had organic gardens, training for a time. Involved in environmental capacity at different levels in the town, the field, where I'm from. Chairman of planning board for 10 years, working with, able to provide regulations or policies which has helped stabilize land usage, but unfortunately I see it's running badly. But when I came to Maine, just the nickname, year ago, not the motto, year ago, I lead, made me feel very proud of it. And through the years, I've seen, I've been, pride has only increased, moved up to the environmental decision-making, social service decision-making state of Maine. Several people have said, just being involved in society and community, it does lead. As an educator, my quality of life for my students and their children and their grandchildren is very important. So the issue or the idea of not having something as fundamental as a choice, know what you're eating, just sounds like a draconian, absurd reality, but it's true. We're not asking, we're not supporting doing away with anything, it's just the right to know. And when we reach a point where that becomes controversial, I'm afraid we're on a slippery slope relative to democratic procedures, process, and so forth. So I hope committee, I think of grandchildren, good quality of choice, and there we go.
Thank you, James. Be careful, though, when you say about old people, I'm the oldest in the state senate.
This is Sharnell, Betsy Carroll, Stephen Roberts, Ellis Addison, Joy Metcalf, Carolyn Burke, Callia Burke, and Choey Brinzuma. Those are the people that formed the sign-up sheet.
Good afternoon, members of the committee, Senator Edgum and Representative Hickman. I'm here to support LD 783, and I'm here representing myself, my family, my friends, and future generations.
Your name again?
Susan Lubner. I've been passionate about health, nutrition, food for over 40 years, and I'm currently a yoga teacher. And I want to bring in a little bit of history. History being when we don't have the right to control, or we don't actually know what's going on with our food. Back when genetically modified foods, for example, were introduced first by major corporations, shortly after that, the rates, incidences of major diseases surged, actually cancer really surged, and other major diseases. For example, the FDA doesn't really test these foods, though, unfortunately, to know what's going on with them. And the person who's responsible in the FDA for our food, the food czar of the FDA, is a former Monsanto vice president, and he's the person assigned to watching the safety of our food. So if we have this ability to have control at a local level, I mean, what happens to, they're finding in tissues of fetal tissues, placental tissues from pregnant women, that there's remnants of these chemicals that are in our food, that, and some people are even feeling that these chemicals that are in our food, that we don't have control over, and if the corporations run it and we don't get to run it on a local level, are eventually affecting the genes of future generations. So, and who knows? We don't really know what they're doing, what's happening with all this. So I invite you to strongly support this so that we do have control at a local level. And as everyone else says, we lead. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. My hearing is, I didn't catch the word in front of teacher, what do you teach?
I teach yoga.
Yoga, oh, okay.
And former social worker for the state of Maine.
Thank you. Questions, Susan? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
I'm from a theater family, so that makes sense.
You're going to do our meeting.
I'm Rebecca Wentworth. I'm from Blue Hill presently. I was born in Tenet's Harbor. I've lived in DC, New York, et cetera, et cetera. I have a huge history in that my great uncle was CEO of Southern Illinois Millway. This is one of the businesses that first cornered the meat market and drove farmers out of business. They created the beginning of the great. So I'm, I feel very responsible for this guy, and I really feel like I have to say that the right to food is the right to a balanced economy. If we don't have the right food, we're going to have an unbalanced economy. And so I really don't have much more to say than that. So if you want a healthy economy, then we have to have this. It just has to happen.
Well, thank you for, and this is also for everyone here, you brought up something that we hadn't heard previously about the economy, et cetera. So thank you for that point, and also if you have something in your testimony and you want to be sure you get in the three minutes, and it hasn't been said, that you need to let us know, that's important. So, thank you.
Okay.
Did you follow what I just said?
No.
I knew you had that look on your face.
I'm just trying to figure out if I said what I had to say, but I'm pretty sure I did.
Autumn Brook.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Autumn Brook. I'm from the Maine, and I am a very concerned citizen for the condition our food has become on our federal government levels of approval and allowances. I have become so concerned that I don't have the equipment to dig a nice big garden, but I have a willpower and I have a fear of what I'm putting in my body that's left unlabeled, that I chose to take a shovel and dig a 25-yard by 25-yard garden last year as I was grieving my father's death. And I felt that energy inside of me using my father in March, and it hurt me so bad, I actually bowed right down on that garden, and I wanted to have that garden be a memorial to my father. And I asked God to bless this garden for the world to understand how dangerous our food is becoming, how out of control it is, how the control is being taken from us, the public, and it can necessarily come into our state governments. And we are here to voice that to you on an international level, TPPs, FAS tracks, all these, you know, whistleblowing, backdoor deals, Monsanto has a right to, you know, bring suits on a government or a country or any other, you know, business enterprise. These are just whistles in the wind. However, as citizens and the public and just our own American heritage, we, you know, I grew up on a farm in New Jersey, the Garden State. I mean, I ran chasing butterflies and having, you know, laughing like a little girl, chasing puppy dog tails, okay? I learned quick how, you know, hard it is for a farmer to work, or the invasiveness of another farm that could be affecting him, or a spray that's coming over that's not welcome. And these things in the 783, where I wasn't really prepared, and I'm just talking right from, you know, my conscience right now, because I respect our state government. I am very proud of the Maine government, legislative, senator, all levels up in your committees, okay? And it gives us the opportunity to, because we know your days are full, full, and to, you know, not having enough time to see the many weblogs we see, these, you know, things coming out from independent or, you know, real news versus fake news. We pay attention to that, and it gets to the point that it's just way too much to chew or digest. So with the, with our LD 783, it is a baby step, and I know it will require a lot of work, because I had a lot of questions with that, where the rights for, you know, the pesticide uses or one farmer's way to grow food versus the...
Thank you, thank you, Autumn, and sorry.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, and sorry to hear about your dad, and then thank you for the...
My garden did good, and God heard me and my dad smiled. Thank you.
Question, Paul.
Representative Dill.
No.
Representative Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm just curious, in your garden, are you growing any of those delicious Jersey tomatoes?
I'm glad you said that, because I actually had a big trip to go to Moosehead on my way back from a family vacation in Jersey, and my mom's always telling, oh, take everything you want, honey, and their tomatoes are very meaty, and there is a very big difference. And that's one thing, I mean, I love, I've been in Maine 27 years, more than I've been alive in New Jersey, but that, I was missing anything other than that, it was the agriculture, the food, the fresh produce. And when I came home and I went to Moosehead and my boyfriend at the time, oh, there is no difference, a tomato's a tomato. And when he tasted that, he was totally sold that New Jersey is the Garden State, that there really is a big difference, and probably the soil, I would imagine.
And it was vine ripened, probably. Grass, vine ripened, ripened on the vines.
Yeah, well, my mom, yeah. And it was organic, you know?
Representative Kenny has a follow-up question.
Well, more of a follow-up statement. I had family, I'm from New Jersey, actually, myself, and although I lived in Maine since I was a year and a half, but we went down and visited family, and my mother actually got high, she ate so many of the tomatoes in there. No joke, this, this, this was delicious. Thank you for your...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth. Sharnell or Sharnie, sorry. Thank you.
Do we need to sign in?
Yes.
That one on Maine, so don't start that time. Married into it, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Ready? Good afternoon, Senator Edgum, Representative Hickman, and members of the committee. My name is Elizabeth Shardlow, I live in Auburn, and I'm here today on behalf of myself, my husband, and our soon, our three soon-to-be-four children, I'll just count. I'm speaking out today because my children depend on me to provide them with nourishing, safe food, so they may grow to their fullest potential. As any parent knows, food, especially healthy food, can be expensive, and the ravenous appetites of my growing children could easily bankrupt me if not for my husband and I digging deep, planting sieves, chasing and processing chickens, and stretching our half-acre in-town lot to the very maximum limits of our municipal farming and agricultural ordinances. Shh, I'm on the server, please. We rely on friends, family, and local farmers to nurture bodies. As the federal government, deeply connected to the industrial food corporations, has worked diligently to limit our food choices, many families like mine have had to get creative, pay more, or blindly trust the faceless labels on grocery store shelves. Recently, at a local farmer's market, while selecting a most amazing block of raw local cheese, alive with the healthy cultures that my body needs, the cheesemaker gestured towards my obvious pregnancy and cautioned me that the cheese was made with raw milk. I only wish that the faceless spinach, tree nut, and hummus packages at my local store came with same precautions before they killed countless Americans in recent weeks and years. If only the cantaloupes cared about my unborn child, for surely the company selling them did not. While many people blindly rely on the federal government to protect their health, the real truth is that the FDA, USDA, CDC, and other agencies are in many ways threatening our health and our right to make sustainable nourishing choices for ourselves and our children. At the end of the day, it is my responsibility to decide once for dinner. Please protect that right and support the health of my children by voting a to pass on LD 783.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Questions? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. Betsy Carroll, followed by Stephen Roberts, Ellis Addison, Joy Metcalf.
Tough act to follow. Mine is, my testimony is my more nerdy.
But they are really good group folks, I appreciate that, that you're respectful of everyone testifying, and I, we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Senator Edgum, Representative Hickman, and distinguished members of the committee. My name is Betsy Carroll, I live in Knox, and Representative Kenny, and I represent several organizations today, Food Remains Future, Local Food Rules, and the Farm to Consumer Legal Defense Fund. I come here today to speak in favor of LD 783. Cassie is handing you a copy of my testimony, but also a paper written by David J. Berg, a lawyer from Milwaukee, Wisconsin. He developed the idea for this article from legal research that he did, that he had performed pro bono for the Farm to Consumer Legal Defense Fund. I'm going to speak today about a dissenting opinion by a United States Supreme Court Justice Stephen Field in an 1888 case, Powell versus the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. This was a case that pitted a small oleo manufacturer against the powerful dairy lobby in that state and hinged on the 14th Amendment to the Constitution, commonly referred to as the due process clause. The court ultimately found in favor of the dairy industry. I'm not a lawyer, but this was a story that resonated with me, and so I read Justice Field's opinion. Here are some quotes. "The due process clause is found in the constitutions of nearly all the states and was designed to prevent the arbitrary deprivation of life and liberty and the arbitrary spoliation of property. It has always been supposed to secure to every person the essential conditions for the pursuit of happiness. Liberty in its broad sense, as understood in this country, means the right, not only of freedom from actual servitude, imprisonment, or restraint, but the right of one to use his faculties in all lawful ways, to live and work where he will, to earn his livelihood in any lawful calling, and to pursue any lawful trade or vocation. The right to pursue one's happiness is placed by the Declaration of Independence among the inalienable rights of man and to secure them, not to grant them. Governments are instituted among men. The right to procure healthy and nutritious food by which life may be preserved and enjoyed and to manufacture it is among these inalienable rights which no state can give and no state can take away. It is involved in the right to pursue one's happiness. The object and effect of the Act," this is the law that in Pennsylvania this is based on, "notwithstanding its title, was not to supplement existing provisions against fraud and deception, but to prohibit the manufacture and sale of any article which could be used as a substitute for butter. However openly and fairly, the character of the substitute might be avowed and published to drive the substituted article from the market and protect those engaged in the market of dairy products against the competition of cheaper substances. Measures of this kind are dangerous even to their promoters. If the argument of the respondent in the support of the absolute power of the legislature to prohibit one branch of industry for the purpose of protecting another with which it competes can be sustained, why could not the oleo margarine manufacturers, should they obtain sufficient power to influence or control the Legislative Council, prohibit the manufacture or sale of dairy products? The principle is the same in both cases. Equal rights to all are what are intended to be secured by the establishment of constitutional law and legislative power." Sorry.
Nope, you were really close. I'll make a note of that on the...
Okay.
Questions for Betsy? Thank you.
Thank you.
While the other person is signing in, I advise each of you to read that last sentence, though, one, two, three sentences, but they're short.
Stephen Roberts.
Welcome, Stephen.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm Stephen Roberts, and I'm in Slondo. I'm a farmer, I'm retired. Rather than repeat and re-attend in all over the place, I have a couple of other points that we can probably make in the... First off, I came here today, my thought really wasn't so much for me, as a realization that this is really about our children, their children, and so on. It's about the future of people. So with that in mind, I also noted that we had the hunting, fishing, and foraging clause in there, and we must remember that the tribal representative has really pointed out well earlier that this, what we have in these areas is a shared resource, to be shared by all, not a few. So wording has got to be attended to, so that we're all secure in that, and we need to be able to depend on our state biologists and scientists, more sometimes than politicians, to make sure that we are sustainable. Okay, so this is important. The other thought that I've had here coming on, as I've been listening to this, too, is maybe people ought to take a peek at the larger picture. On the tiny picture, a bill like this, where I consult my neighbors, I'll probably open up my economy. But looking at that on a little bit bigger picture, right? Ninety percent of our food is imported. All of the money that we spend on local food... All of the money that we spend on local food stays here. And as the demand for local food increases, and more people are farming, it stays here. This is valuable, too. All right? And so there's more to this camp than a can of worms, if you will, but healthy worms, right? But there's more to this. I mean, this is a bill that's good for Maine. We have to be careful that we manage our resources. It's a shared resource, but it's going to generate jobs, you know? Its repercussions are just more than we really imagined, but we have to be careful. And that's my comment for today.
Well, thank you, Stephen. Any questions? Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.